All right, well, today we have the first of a series of two work sessions dedicated to our capital improvement planning process for 2024. So in both in the read ahead packet and then in the slide deck that I dedicated is some drafts for this year. And they're very much at their relaxed at this point. For those who are new to the, new to the capital improvement process, we look out 10 years in our capital planning. However, we really focus mostly on the next five years and in particular, the next year or two. So as we, as we go through this, you'll see items that are out in what we call the planning period. If you look at any of the charts, that's the last five years of there. And quite honestly, we don't spend a lot of time picking a particular year or something like that. I always kind of look at those as placeholders. Things that we know are out in the future somewhere in, in that period and about that cost, but we're not being real particular about where they are. As they get closer to execution, we take more and more time to try to refine them a little bit better. So that, so that we're, we're ready to go when, when it's time to execute. So we'll go through a number of them today. Again, this is a draft, I'm happy to answer, have myself or the relevant department head answer any questions you might have. If you want to take a deep dive into any of these, then you know, we have between now and December, when you'll actually approve the capital improvement plan. And then the other thing I would say, even when you approve the capital improvement plan, it is a planning document. It does not authorize expenditure of any of these capital funds. Each of those things comes back to the council during either the, the design year or the, or the execution year for approval. So as an example, we don't have today, but roads, you know, we'll, we'll have a bunch of roads we're planning for next year. And although we've got numbers of the streets capital improvement plan for those, next spring, as, as we get bids for those projects and those come back to you, the council has to approve those kinds of expenditures. That said, one of the things that the capital improvement plan does kind of authorize us is, is to expend staff time. So when you do approve the capital improvement plan in December, that's a message to me and the rest of the staff that, yep, we're going to do these projects most likely this year, so we'll start doing any preliminary staff work we need to do to, to, to prepare those and coordinate those, those activities. So with that, the first thing I have up is the facilities capital improvement plan. This has got a lot of big dollars in it. So looking at 2024, we have the public works facility, part two, which I'll go over in a second commodities yard. We have the repurposing of the existing public works facility for temporary fire and also some fire station number two improvements to allow it to be used as a fire station and then also expand in, in the future. For each of the ones that we have in the near term, I, we have a sheet with some more details that we'll go through. The other thing I should say is that in your packet, you had it separately, but we have the fund balances for each of those areas. And then in the, in the slide deck, I put the fund balance section right below the government improvement plan. So you can just see both on the same sheet, if you can read the small parts. So the first one I'll go over is the public works commodities yard. So as you know, when we, we first went out for bid for the new public works facility, we went off for the new public works facility complete. However, those bids came in way over our budget, so we went back to the drawing board with the architect and we removed some things from the plan so we could get a project that was bidable. We did that and the main thing that we removed from that plan set was the commodities yard. Commodities yard is where we store all of the bulk materials, aggregate the soil, the salt and those kinds of things. You know, things you use a bucket loader to move around, that's where those get, get stored. So that portion was not included in the project that's currently out for bid. The estimated value of that when we did the original design was 1.3 million dollars. This is one where we are a bit challenged and that we don't have, as it says in the comments there, we don't have, we're challenged to find a, a funding source for the commodities area. To do so, we may, if we bring this forward, look at trying to, trying to do an interfund loan and see what balances we might have in the community investment fund or potentially see if some state bonding money is available to opt this one out. I think this might be candidate for some state bonding money because it, it is, it does serve more than just the city of Orno. Our commodities yard supports Minnetonka Beach, Spring Park and the Orno School District. So it's a multi-agency type effort, so that's, that's what that project was thinking. Currently looking at that, I put it as an execution year of 2025 because we still need to figure out the funding sources to be able to do that. In the short term, we can continue to use the commodities yard that we have. However, it has a limited life, particularly the salt shed. And also, if many of you remember, one of the genesises for the new public works facility is the fact that we're right next to high density housing. And one of the big things that the high density housing folks do not care for is our loader moving around and moving on our piles of stuff, particularly with its backup alarm. So the longer we stay there, the more we irritate the neighbors. Not the best necessarily a driver for 1.3 million, but that is part of the reason we need to move. The next one I had on there is the, sorry, I'm not keeping up with my slides there, is the old public works building repurposing for fire. If you notice on the spreadsheet, I have it in two different years, a smaller number and then a bigger number later on. What's that is there to show is tentatively looking at what the bare minimum is we would need to do to the current public works facility to repurpose it to fire temporarily. And then that bigger number later on is if we repurpose it more permanently to some other function. In this case, I use the recreation center as a landing number, since we had dollars for that in the study. But what this particular slide is focused on is the fire component, what we would need to do immediately upon the public works guys vacating the building. We don't have an exact number yet, as you know, we're doing that study. We did get an initial feedback from the architect and his team that, that it was very feasible to use the building in a temporary, as a temporary fire facility for what will probably be fairly minimal costs. After they did some additional analysis, particularly on the structure, structural engineer, which is the one thing we were kind of worried about. It looks like, it looks like we're in pretty good, in pretty good condition to, to be, to repurpose it. The majority, I think, of the cost would be in mechanicals, exhaust, fans, air recirculating, things like that. Things that need to be done to the building anyway, needed to be done to the building, if it was going to even continue to be used for public works purposes. So right now I have a placeholder dollar of 200,000 in there. I've, they've been bouncing around back to envelope things anywhere from 150 to 300. But we'll see here, hopefully in the next week or two, I'll have a more refined cost estimate from the architect. The other part of that is in the next slide is, is we also have them looking at, oh, what can we do to provide temporary facilities in the Navarre area for the purpose of providing service starting in July of next year? And so we have looking at feasibility of adding two bays to the existing facility. Again, I don't have an exact cost, I've got some back of the envelope costs that have come this way, should have something in the next couple of weeks. But allocated, at least for planning purposes at this point, 300,000 for that. Both of these, the, these two for planning and design, that was, we already had the architect of a floor where we authorized in both 35,000 on the, the planning and design work, which is covering both of these potential projects. Ultimately, funding for these, we did have 3 million in the facility bonding that was designated for fire facilities. So why you see I put facility fund because that's where the money would actually come out of, this was part of that bonding funding. Or could be, that bonding money could be used for part of this. That's all I had to highlight for facilities at this point. Is there any questions on, on those before we move to IT?
I noticed too, you got fire one purchase, so obviously the public work, public works facility repurposed to fire, you know, both of them. You won't do both of them, you're only going to run them with that one, just one of them.
Right, I left the, in 2025, you see eight, 850,000 there for fire station number one purchase. That was based off of a possible scenario where we buy, buy Long Lake out of their half of the building.
And there, and there, and you may not do either of them.
Correct.
You may just have done it, you could potentially do, in the end, it could just be a shared use agreement. And then it's just really more fix-ups of the place.
Correct.
Existing one than purchasing or repurposing. So just note that those are just placeholders for potential future.
Yep, and, and in, in most cases, I, I try to plan for more of worst case scenario type stuff. So we see the more conservative numbers on this. Yeah, and then, and then to your point, Mayor, on fire station one, you see out 2028, 1.1 million. That was if, if we did all of the, what we call deferred maintenance on the building. You know, if we're, if we're still in a 50/50 share with the city of Long Lake, then we would expect only to be paying 50% of that.
What's primarily in that mean is there a new roof?
Uh, it's new roof, mechanicals, some IT, windows. The most pressing thing being, I think, the mechanicals and the roof at least.
Yep.
Any others?
I just have a, I have a question on 2023, 16 million, that's what's already been spent at your mark this year for public works. 16 million in 2023?
Yes, when we divided it out, we divided it into.
And then, and we bonded for 13 million for public works, so we're over by three this year for that? Is that true?
Yeah, we, so we bond, yeah, we bonded.
Bonded for 13 million, and then, so we've got another 3 million expected in 2024 for public works?
Potentially.
Okay.
And actually, you know, now that you bring that up, I will have to relook because I think I had, I have the commodities area in there twice. Because I think the 1.3 was part of that three, so I will double check that number. Because I did break out the commodities for 2025, I don't think I subtracted it from the three.
From the 2024.
Correct.
When you say commodities wasn't initially part of the bid, you mean when it first went out, and what year was that? When did the bid go out?
Um, the year before last, so 20, we went out in the summer of 22. Or spring of 22, and then we went back at the end of summer 22.
And is that a complete redesign from 2021?
No, so we started the design process in 2021.
Okay.
Then we went out for bid. Bids came in way higher than everything we were estimating, steel was going through the roof and all these other things. So then we did not award, council directed to go back to the drawing board and remove some things.
And, and wait a minute, Stu, because we knew there was pricing issues with the delays of.
Correct.
Product and how shipping was, we were, and how that ended up, so we waited for that to calm down, so we go back and.
Yep, so the, the, the package that we rebid was, in essence, the same package we bid, went out for bid the first time, except we took the commodities bin piece of the project out.
Okay, because I, so you.
There were a few other minor things, but that was the main thing.
Okay, but initially I saw bids at 6.5 to 11 million back in 21. Is it just that the city decided to make it larger, is that the issue?
It was a, it's a combination of, of both, yes, there were some early planning numbers, I think the architect from Wold gave us. And we originally, when we were looking at feasibility, we were looking at, we were basically looking at a rebuild of something that was about the same size as what we had. I think we added 10% or something to it. Then when we went through the design process, we ended up with a, a larger facility.
And even given the size of a larger facility, it was not ever meant to be that commodities were being stored in that facility. It was always going to be a part of style, it was a separate project for commodities.
No, it was originally bid as a, a complete site.
It was, and then you took it out.
Took it out in the summer, that was the difference between the two bids.
So is there a cost savings by taking it out initially, but we're still having to pay in the future for it?
Yeah, uh, there perhaps there is. And we, as I mentioned in here, one of the things we're looking at doing is, we're doing some, at the staff level, some reevaluation of what, in particular for the salt shed, what we can get out there in the market for prefabricated buildings and things like that. Whereas it was originally bid as a, a stick, stick build, you know, from scratch type facility, so. And then we are also looking at a different construction technique for the concrete walls, whereas we had poured in place as part of the original bid. Now we're looking at mimicking some things that MinDOT does with T-wall, construction walls, which is prefabricated. Prefabricated concrete walls that we might be able to use as.
Do other cities store their, these things outdoors or are they all under?
It, it's a combination, some things you have, you put undercover, like, like the salt and things like that that did not do well in weather. And then other items, maybe you just leave. Kind of like if you go to a landscaping store, you know, you have bins with the different kinds of things and it's the same, same type of, same type of deal.
And we knew that the, that the commodities yard, we had more time to work on that one because that wouldn't take as much lead time to build it. So we knew by taking that out, we could revisit that and not have a time problem if we needed to. And top of it is when you do go out for bid, if you've got it in the bid, you've got to accept the whole bid. You don't get to just pull stuff out of the bid in terms of moving forward. So that was the one thing we had flexibility on from a time standpoint, so we pulled that out to give it more time to think about it.
So we, are we at about 20 million for public works without commodity shit?
Uh, we're at about, when we're all said and done, we'll be about 17.
17 with all.
And then add, and add the commodities bin.
And we, and we bonded 13 of those.
We bonded, yeah, we bonded 16 altogether, three for fire, 16, or sorry, 13 for.
Over by four, and that doesn't count taking into consideration commodities?
Correct.
All right, that's all, thanks.
So IT, this is our newest capital improvement plan. We, we used to track a lot of our IT capital either in our operating budget or we would just tack it onto our improvement equipment outlet fund, which is where they also do like our vehicles. So this is fairly new one that we've been kind of adding to as we, as we find and discover and are able to plan better and better for some of the IT specific stuff. The one thing you will note, if you look at the fund chart, right now you see a lot of red in the year end cash balance. A lot of that is due to the fact that it was part of the bigger equipment outlay fund, which when you add the two together, they were in the black. When you take this and have it stand on its own, it shows a lot of red. So I tried to put a note in there, it will be dependent upon that equipment out, improvement equipment outlet fund for the next few years to, to make everything balanced properly. The one item on, that we do have in IT for 2024 is, is the next slide. I should, I might do a good job of keeping up on the screen, sorry. Is our ArcGIS online implementation. We are looking at redoing our online GIS portal, that's geographic information system portal. That is our electronic mapping of everything in the city, from our, our utilities to our land, to our parcels, to our developments, to our land use, all that kind of stuff is stored in that system in various layers. I tried to just do a snapshot of a couple of the current ones, one is showing some of our utilities being displayed. The picture below it is showing our, I clicked on our land use map, mapping under. So currently Bolton and Make host the site for us and provides the day-to-day maintenance of our, our current site. But the, the guts of the way that the software work sits on top of a, a platform run by a company called Esri. If any of you do any GIS stuff, you've heard of Esri, they're the big GIS people in, in the world that do most of the stuff that other systems then sit on top of. So a couple of things, they're not, they're not allowing the licensing format that we're currently under in the near future. I think there's two years left on that, and they have some new, new stuff in the background. So it's, it's time for us to migrate to our next level. A couple of good things on that is with this migration, we'll have better integration with other Esri products that we have already used. Our systems, Problem Reporter and these other applications that sit on top of Esri. Our Cartograph, which is our asset management system, sits on top of Esri. And the other good thing, I think, about making this migration is that with the, the new software and the new platform, it will allow a public facing as well as the staff facing portion of the website. So we will be able to host this and allow access to, to the layers that are appropriate for anybody, anybody in the public to look at, as well as those that are, you know, just used at the staff level. So that may be a benefit to our residences, again, various types of planning and what have you.
I have a question, Adam.
Mm-hmm.
How do you, what is the account, how do you account for the revenue jumping from 280 to 411 each year for for IT?
We increase, we mean, increase the amount we charge each of the departments for IT. What's happened, we've been trying to catch up on IT forever. The, they changed the way they do a lot of their licensing. So now you, you lease it, you don't own a product, and those keep going up and up. Well, our first IT budget was, okay, we'll just take everything that we're spending on licensing in all the various departments and make that a, a transfer into the IT fund. Well, it wasn't enough, the, the costs for all this stuff were going up faster than, than that transfer covered. So in the 2024 budget, I think if you look at the numbers, we will actually bring in $2,000 more than we spent on the budget level. So then that will hang over into the future, we will keep increasing the, the amount paid by the department. So that eventually that fund will pay for replacing servers, replacing the switches that are, you know, all, every building has its own two or three switches in it. So that fund will become, the IT fund will become the funding mechanism for all of the equipment that we need. And that's what Adam was talking about. It makes, it looks really bad this year because prior to this year, all of that equipment was sitting in the improvement equipment outlet fund.
Yeah, it does, thanks.
The next one we have is the community investment fund. This is a fund that was set up a, a number of years ago for community projects of general community interest, I think is the right way to say that. We used it, we used it this year in the Navarre parking lot project. And the last thing that we actually had projected for this capital improvement plan is the phase three of the Casal 112 or Wayzetta Boulevard project. That, that's been projected in there for a number of years. It's depend, timing wise, dependent on when Hennepin County does the project. Originally, I believe, phase three was supposed to be done in 2018 or 2019. They kept pushing it back. Well, I just received their final set of plans, so I am fairly confident that they will go out for bid yet this winter and we will be seeing them redo this section of the road. I have an individual slide for this as well, just for those who aren't familiar. Wayzetta Boulevard, phase three is the section of Wayzetta Boulevard from the intersection with Willow out to a line in the pavement as you get towards Dog Park, excuse me, where the bypass work when they redid the intersection stopped. So it's that chunk of pavement roughly shown on the diagram in your slide. The main cost drivers for us in this project, our, our, our portions of any signalized intersections. So the way that the cost sharing rules go for Hennepin County and intersections is everybody pays for their segment of an intersection. So as an example, Old Crystal Bay Road and Wayzetta Boulevard, two, two sections of that are county as 112 goes through. Two sections of that are the city of Orno as Old Crystal Bay goes through. So we, we're on the book for 50% of that intersection signals. You go to Willow Drive, it's, we've got one third, Long Lake has one third and Hennepin County has, or sorry, we have, we have a quarter. Long Lake has a quarter and Hennepin County has a half, sorry, a bad math. So that is what, and you can roughly estimate it's $100,000 per second on a signalized intersection. So that's kind of where that, those numbers come from. The other thing that are, and there are any things that are not turnback funding eligible. Those include decorative light poles, some sidewalk and trail work, and any other items that the city just wants to do. And for us, it's really signalized, or sorry, it's really a few light poles and a little bit of work at our crossings, on our crosswalks that we will be on. The good news is that we may not need to spend this amount of money. Hennepin County has applied to the state. They have what's called a discretionary mutual state aid account at the county level. And they have asked if they can use that account to pay for ours and Long Lake's portion of those intersections. So if that gets approved by the state, this number will go down drastically and will be, you know, maybe around 75,000 to 115,000 for the, our portions of light poles and things like that, which would be great.
Is there someone we can reach out to to advocate for that?
Oh, it's really just a.
It's already in the works.
It's already in the works, it's a kind of more of a staff nub thing at MinDOT. As they, as the accountant checks to see if Hennepin County has enough money and all that kind of stuff. So that is good news. The other thing that's part of that project, not in this, but what you will see next time in the street CIP, is we do have a very small section of Willow Drive as you come from that intersection north to about the entrance to Otten's and, and/or Kelly Avenue here. It is state aid eligible for our state aid, I'm guessing about 92, guessing, estimated about 92,000 for that. So you'll see that, I guess, our state aid minutes. That has been held for years as part of a project to do when, when the, the 112 project was done. So Hennepin County will include it in their planning, their bid, and we will just have to reimburse them for that work. Any questions on that? The other thing we have is, you'll see, if you look into the funds, is that in out, in the out years, when we don't have anything for community investment, we do have money, revenues going into the community investment fund. And it is, it is an appropriate place sometimes to go look, to use money on another project. So, you know, you could, you could in the future decide that you want to use some, if there's a balance in here to use some for parks or like we did for parking lot, or, you know, those things that have a community, community-wide, that. Any questions? All right, parks. I'll hit the high level stuff and then Josh can answer any questions. So parks is, is a unique capital improvement plan in that parks are one of those areas where when we're doing bigger projects, we are dependent upon funding from other sources, whether that be donations, grants, state bonding, those kind of things. So a lot of times you will see some numbers in here that are, are rather large. And some of those are dependent on us figuring out what those funding sources are. Or in a lot of cases, if we don't get that full amount of funding, then we look at, well, do we reduce the project, move the project, what do we do? So if you look in the park fund section, you do see a, a line in there, revenues needed, grants and donations. Those are our guesses and those are some pretty big numbers in the immediate future to pay for some pretty big projects that are on the list. Most notably, Hackberry, if we do, can do the full Hackberry project, Pickleball. I think those are the main ones that I'm. The other thing to note is, we'll, we'll get to it here in a minute, but we also have a project we're projecting against Lerton Park. Lerton Park is the one park that has its own fund, so it doesn't, it, it doesn't drop on the, the parks funds. It has its own funding source, which is replenished through our annual permits for, for the permits to Dog Park every year. So that's where revenues usually come from that. The first one we have up is a Hackberry, well, it's called Master Plan, but we already did that portion. It's really, really should be listed as the Hackberry project. It's really, should be listed as the Hackberry project.
Yes, we presented this two weeks ago. You know, the challenges with this park. Really what we're looking at is improved conditions for a multi-use field. A renovated tee ball field, not eliminated tee ball field, but renovated one. And parking, parking has been a real issue at this park. So it's a pretty straightforward project. This will allow for a lot of drainage going in and for that elevated multi-use field, some irrigation to go in as well. Grants, that amount came out a little different or is that...
Yeah, I, I read some of your, some of your numbers, sorry.
Sorry.
So the, the way I broke, broke out some of the numbers right before the meeting is, we know, we know the city can, could pay and will pay for out of the Parks Fund, planning and design numbers. We already, we already did part of that. And I was able to back out the stormwater associated things in the project to be able to put those against stormwater. And then what, what I also did is I pulled out anything that was particular to a sport. So things like nets.
Dugouts.
Dugouts, those kinds of things. And I put those under a donation line item. In the past, that's how we've kind of done those things on other fields. We've worked with whatever sports, we're to either jointly go out for a grant or they donate those materials or what have you. And then the final number I had in there was everything else at seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars if we went with the full design. Now, I don't necessarily think we'll get seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars worth of grants. We've asked for three hundred thousand in the Hennepin County one. If we can find another grant source, we will, we will. Could also come from donations, although I should, whatever that balance is, we have to find funding for. Again, that's, could come out of the Parks Fund, could come out of Community Investment Fund and some other areas, so.
And we'd look at the project in phases as well.
Right.
As funds are available.
Next, it's Josh's favorite.
And Pickleball at Donation Garden site. So we are still waiting to hear back from Bullman Make on just some estimated costs, but we did have the, the Master Plan concept for the golf course. So we were able to apply some of that to this location. There's, there's some efficiencies here where we don't need to do as much grading. So, but, so we know the costs of the, the courts. So we estimated around five hundred thousand for the project. And this has been on the Park Commission's radar for a couple of years now. We do have, if I get an email or a phone call several throughout the week of residents asking for Pickleball. So this is still on, on the Park Commission's radar. They want to get this done and I feel like the Donation Garden is the most viable site to have this happen. This is one thing that we don't have budgeted for. So our, we have our Park Commissioner, Sandy Rasmussen, who is looking at working with our 501(c)(3) to generate some donations to really get the community engaged to see if they can fund this project.
The next one we have is the Lurton parking lot expansion. This is another thing that has been asked for by the Parks Commission for a few years. If, if you drive by Lurton Park on a nice sunny afternoon, you will see cars parked throughout the parking lot, down the entrance and down along Wayzetta Boulevard. So that, that has been noted. So we were asked to look at feasibility of expanding the parking lot. So Josh and I did meet with Bullman Make, actually la- last week to just do a walkthrough, just to confirm kind of what we thought anyway, which was really the only feasible place to extend the, extend the parking is into the red hatched area somewhere going up the hill. And so we'll, we'll bring back some estimates on exact costs. Right now, I put a number of forty-five thousand in there, roughly mimicking what our costs were at the golf course to redo that parking lot, so kind of similar scope of asshole and what have you. This one would entail the moving of some fences and alteration of some of, a little bit of the trail layout as you can see there on, in the map. Again, this one, the nice, the nice thing about Lurton Park again is projects here are self-funded by the Lurton Park Fund. So it doesn't, doesn't necessarily compete with the, the park, overall Parks Fund or other funding sources.
Perfect.
How much does that generate for you, improvements?
Uh, it's right around fifteen thousand, I think was...
Something like that. I haven't looked recently.
Yep.
And we did increase the fees this year, so.
Yeah, I, I previously had about every other, every third year on the capital improvement plan, a twenty thousand dollar park improvement for Lurton Park. In the past, we've do, done those projects to improve the, the trail network inside the park. So adding more, more gravel and, not AKA accessible, but more accessible trails.
Almost, did you say per year, the, the improvements?
Oh, about twenty thousand every second or third year.
Second or third year, okay.
Depending on how watching that fund as it builds. Oh, okay, next year we'll, we should have enough to make it worthwhile to be a project. Oh, that fund also pays for some of the routine maintenance. So we have some contracted maintenance for...
Prairie restoration.
Prairie restoration, things like that, that that fund also helps pay for. It was originally set up when the park was donated and the 112 project, or sorry, the Highway 12 project went through some of those state funds or state, when they, we paid for that land with the owner and then the owner donated to us, those funds went into a fund, which was Lurton Park Fund.
Does that also pay, is there a surveillance cameras at that park?
There are.
This is coming up this as well?
That's coming out of our operating.
Operating.
Operating. Yeah, we did, we did add a, a camera after we had several of the smash and grabs and things like that.
Has that gone down since we had the camera? The camera captured after the first day of installation, captured one?
It was the first day.
First day.
The first day we had it, we had a smash and grab.
Yep. And we hadn't had, haven't had one since.
We had two that week.
Yep, yep.
Yep. And then that was it.
Yep.
Two months ago?
That's, yeah, we saw that influx in active, all-in-all communities.
A thousand and two months ago.
Yeah. And that first one was a known entity too, if our revenue investigators come here, right?
Yep, yeah.
Next, if there are no other questions, we'll move on to police. The police CIP also a little somewhat different from other CIPs. As you all know, we're, we have contract cities who, who pay us for our services as well as what, you know, we put into police. And so part of that, that bill to our contract cities as well as to ourselves includes money for capital. You see generally Cory's capital consists mostly of vehicles, squad cars, as well as some weapons and some technology. And I'll leave it to Cory to tell you what he's looking for next year.
So for 2024, we're looking at replacing three to four of our vehicles currently in the fleet. Majority of them have about a hundred, or near a hundred thousand. And the reason we look at that hundred thousand is under warranty. Right now, our fleet has two sitting up at Dodge at the dealership under, during warranty. One is estimated, I think, three to four weeks up yet to make it worse. Some of these, that's where we looked at going, always have powertrain warranties to about a hundred thousand miles. We really don't want to keep them past that. They have hours for hybrid time, so that's where we're looking at replacement. What we're looking at next year though is our neighboring agencies or some neighboring agencies have looked at the electric vehicle. Everybody wants to, you know, go to that. They've tried Teslas, they've tried the Ford Lightning. The issue that they had with some of those were they're taking a vehicle from a factory and then adding aftermarket and trying to add the aftermarket into the factory of the batteries and whatnot. So next year, we're looking for Chevy has their Blazer, which is about the same size as, uh, the Durangos. And a full electric, but it comes preloaded or prepackaged with lighting. And it's a lot of the equipment that we would have to take to the aftermarket, so it's part of that factory. So that's where you see not only a substantial increase because from going gas powered to hybrid to an all-electric is that some of that cost also includes some of the equipment. So we don't know if we can be put on a list. We're, we're trying to be eligible to see if we can get that, that's come through. We'll be on a list if they don't know pricing at this point. They're giving an estimate of in between fifty-eight and sixty-five thousand until tiny belts. We should put in about sixty, just played say for an electric vehicle where that's in comparison about forty-seven they're estimating for a gas powered. So if we get the option or the availability of electric vehicle, we may take the opportunity to look at that and then do comparison with, is there cost savings in how we utilize them over the long run? We just don't know about durability because there haven't been a lot of tests in vehicles back there. But that's our biggest cost associated with next year is looking at which vehicles and the cost of what those vehicles are coming in for MSRP and then adding that equipment, which is about twenty thousand dollars per vehicle per setup.
And I, it's not only that it costs more upfront for the electric, it's also the resale value. There's, there's no resale market for those electric vehicles. There's, there's on the backend as well.
You'd be curious to see if there's any grants or if there's, you know, if there are new, I guess they're the same vehicles that are probably not eligible for the rebate.
That's what we're checking into because I'm not cer- certain of that, if there's any eligibility or not. I mean, that was the big push a while, a few years ago because of the incentives and the rebates from the state. So we'll look at that as well.
The, the other part of that too is the electrification of facilities then to support electric vehicles. There are some grants and things that are out there that, you know, once we start going down this path of electric vehicles and we would obviously want to apply for those. We did some, we've done some things in having the, the circuitry available or the...
Infrastructure.
The infrastructure there so that we can do that later. I know that's one of the things we, you know, put into the new public works facility is the ability that down the road if we needed to put the charging sockets in, we could do that. We would be able to store areas and then we would look at doing something similar in the space.
What about, about maintenance? Obviously, we got, we brought maintenance in-house for that kind of stuff. Do you even have the ability to work on those kind of vehicles?
We work on everything except for the, the battery pack and the, and the powertrain, which we probably wouldn't really do anyway. But, you know, brakes, tires, those kind of common things, we would still be able to do ourselves.
You know, there's a certain amount of risk of being an early adopter, you know? And so that's how we've got to kind of measure. But I, you know, there could be a real maintenance savings, you know? I mean, that's the, you know, potential there is maybe there's, you know, less maintenance for us to have to do and maybe it offsets it over three years, I, I don't know, but.
The thing you got to look at in an electric vehicle is the amount of electronics in, in police officers' cars going to run consistently. The winter time comes, you're always running your heat, you know? It's not, they, they can't have it not be properly charged. So that's going to take a lot of the charge, you know?
And we're, we're partnering, you know, our neighboring agency as well in Spring Park, we've got a patrol. They already have or will be in their modification to have charging stations. So that's one of the areas that we're, where we have a substation and a desk that we can do reports. So that's an option. So we are looking at different, but that's our biggest concern is the winter.
The winter, yeah.
Yeah, the winter.
The, 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 the Sherry's guy.
And that was one of the reasons why we're looking at the Chevy because it comes prepackaged.
That's good.
Versus adding some, the Prairie, I believe it was a Tesla they tried, they had to have, add two extra batteries just to run the accessory equipment that they installed for future because you could tap into the original battery system. So that's what we're looking at. And this one came preloaded with lights and some of the other aspects. That's where we said, well, if we aren't going to try, here's the opportunity versus buying one, putting on aftermarket, tapping in, then it becomes not feasible, not efficient, not...
Has any neighboring departments done this particular vehicle?
This vehicle is just being introduced into what we're looking for.
All right.
So Ford has it like in a pickup, coming, is testing that. I believe they just got the resident testing it for the long, but we haven't had a winter yet.
Yeah.
Hi, Dave and I, I'm a worker. And the one, and the one nice thing is, is if we get selected to preorder, we can always decline and not take possession of it because somebody else will be able to sell it. So that's where we're looking at if we hear that things, we just...
Or you could take it and sell it early and make a profit.
Or, or, or you can maybe wait till the next year and see how the winter, do you get them and how the winter works out.
We don't even know how many they're going to...
Do we want to be anything?
Yeah, how many they're going to introduce, how many are going to be available? And so that's where we're looking, just like any other vehicle.
I don't think it would be bad to be on the list. This way you can make a decision at that time whether it's something that you want to entertain or with the information that you have, you can cancel it, like the chief said. And I'm telling you, some of these electric vehicles, sometimes you might be able to take it in. If you don't want it, sell it, that a problem.
I don't know if I go all in like three to four.
No, no, we're, we're looking at one.
We're looking at all or not the one.
You know, if it was something that we were, it was based on, had a good rating, not that first year, then we may go all in and say we can get two or three. However, I think it's just one of those, let's just test, test it here, see how it works. If it's, if it works well for our area, then we'll, we'll look at feature, changing over and sort of modifying every week to include these as we report it as well. But, you know, there's also a fighting concern because with the lithium batteries, you know, you have too many. Once they start on fire, they're not putting on. So that's where we looked at, you know, does our sprinkler system, does our capabilities in the garage support having a fleet of electric vehicles? Right now, our facility does not. So that's where we're looking at one, let's wait, see how it works out, see how it goes and then we'll build our fleet from there if we have successful.
We said a couple of the dryer bombs around the vehicle, what do you make of that? Right? You don't have to add that for the powder.
Well, that is a concern. If you can put it out, water that actually makes it even worse. You almost have to have a dry system, that's a whole different issue.
Well, that's what I'm saying, a dryer bomb, basically.
I'm talking about a dry sprinkler system.
No, I'm talking about like a dryer bomb. If the thing catches fire, it just explodes and you got powder going over it and hopefully putting it out. And then pull around the car.
And that's where you look at, you know, do we have it outside, so, or do we, do we keep it in the area? But those are some of those.
You can't keep that car outside.
No, but that's one of those that we're looking at.
Because that'll just...
Create its own secondary issues you got in the garden, right?
So are these going to be covered then? You're, you're looking at four, you said four vehicles?
Between three or four, it's unavailability like this year, we ordered four, we went to three and...
Unavailability, right.
Unavailability because we ordered four, they called, said, hey, your, your second round of vehicles are here. And we all care about two, no, just one. And we'll, we'll order four. Well, you have that one, we didn't, so we're getting, so yes, so we, we don't know it's all unavailability.
We'll have enough in here as it stands for before.
Yes, yes, okay, yep.
The new ones were the Durangos again?
Um, Chevy has those most likely. So that's what we got this year. It's just gauging the market on what's available and we'll get it sliding. So we went to Iowa this year and so that's where we've had success. We preordered for next year or we will preorder and hopefully get it on the list as well.
I actually think that started coming to an end now, this demand issue.
What, what you're seeing is parts, availability of parts that fits in now. We're having more agencies that have them stuck in garages, not being able to get their parts to repair certain things. Rotors, some of these, um, the Durangos are six months off to get orders.
Six months on some stuff on that category.
So it's, so we're trying, it's nice with our mechanic is trying to stockpile some, but even then they're our national back order, so if I get at least one set, so it'll be a proposal.
And the A W is sponsored. Um, I did include the fire CIP in here, but I will say that this is exactly, I, we made no changes. It's the exact same thing we briefed you a couple of months ago when we did the equipment orders. So rather than brief you all on it again, if we have changes available, we can answer questions or move on, whichever you like. And then, so looking into next meeting, next meeting on the CIP will be focusing on streets, sewer, water, stormwater and equipment, so.
Adam in Egypt show.
You have one of those, I, I only put out so many of the slides.
You don't have that one?
No, but if you, you know, if you send me an email, I'll send it to you.